Good evening, I'd like to open up the council meeting of November 9, 2016. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
Would everybody please rise for a silent prayer or moment of reflection, please? Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. The next item, the presentation by the Asbury Park Housing Authority, has been canceled for this evening, so next we're up to special events. Lysia?
Yes, it's two. Good evening, mayor and council. This evening we have two applications. The first one is the 53rd Annual Polar Bear Races, which would be held on December 31st on the boardwalk from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. And the second application would be the Asbury Park Rotary Club Polar Bear Plunge, which would be held on January 28th from 8 a.m. to noon. Any questions?
You're good.
Thank you.
Next item is review of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we've been doing, I would like just to quickly go over some of the agenda items. Starting with, let's see. Resolution 2016-438, which is a resolution for Chapter 159. This is for a body armor grant that the police department has received. And Resolution 2016-439 is a resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. The city is in the process of getting rid of all our stuff that we don't use anymore. Old computer monitors, old computers, everything that we don't need anymore, we're going to start auctioning it off. You're going to see a couple more of these as the weeks and months progress. Moving to individual resolutions. One of interest is 2016-441. This is a transfer of appropriations in this year's budget. Under state statute, you can do, municipalities can do transfers to line items that have been over and/or under expended between November, December, January, February, and March. This is to cover some of our insurance expenses and costs, especially the JIF payment. So you'll see it's to the liability insurance. Everything else is to pay our insurance bill. I'll ask the deputy manager, fire chief, Kevin Keddie, to discuss Resolution 2016-443, which is to apply for a FEMA AFG grant. Kevin?
The fire department is seeking permission via resolution to apply for the Assistance of Firefighters grant. This grant cycle comes out every year, and we have been very successful historically with these grants, bringing in, over time, millions of dollars' worth of equipment into the city. This year, we want to apply to replace our rescue truck at a cost up to $600,000, and the city would be on the hook for a 5% match, which would be up to $30,000 if we're successful. I don't see it going that high, but we want it to have a cushion just in case.
This money would be available through the capital improvement fund, if needed, if awarded, and can be also included in the budget. So if there's any questions, we'll get to that one in a second. The next resolution is 2016-444. It's awarding a contract for environmental services for tax block 803 lots 1 through 14, commonly known as the Turf Club, to Lewis Consulting Group. This was out to bid, and the staff is recommending award to Lewis Consulting Group to do an environmental cleanup on this site. In the subsequent developer agreement with Interfaith, they are allocated a $50,000 credit for cleanup. So Ms. Alonso and myself met with Interfaith, and we, as a government, have the ability to apply to DEP for certain funds. So this will actually save us money by doing this. In the resolution, it states the contract is expected to be $63,700, which at face value is obviously more than 50, but we are eligible for 100% reimbursement of the site investigation work and 75% of the remediation. So that $63,000 is going to be closer to 10,000 to 15,000, reducing obviously less than what the 50,000 would be in the developers' agreement. And that's common that there is that sort of buffer for cleanup of a brownfield site. So we're recommending this. It's actually going to make us money in the long run and clean up the site. Two very important and last resolutions is 2016-445 and 2016-446. 446 is the redevelopment area bonds in the amount of $17.5 million for I-STAR for the 1101 project. This is for infrastructure. And Resolution 2016-445 authorizes the execution of a subsequent developer agreement with Asbury Park AP Block 176 Venture Urban Renewal LLC. This is the 1101 Ocean Avenue project. I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that this Friday, as part of this agreement, I-STAR is going to be holding a pre-qualification interest at the Asbury Hotel all day for local businesses and residents who are trying to get involved in their activities with the general contractor, Sedoni. So we're going to be sending out another press release. I know it was in the paper that I-STAR has done that, but this is the 1101 project. This and then the ordinances, which are for second reading tonight, which we'll get to when we do that, portion of it is the final aspect to approve the 1101 Ocean project. The subsequent developer agreement for us is approximately $2,200,000 and $2,500,000 in pilot money upon build-out of the four components. The components consist of a parking garage, retail, the hotel, and then the residential aspect of it, of approximately 128 residential properties, units. So this is 1101. It's the one that everyone's been waiting for. This will immensely help the city's financial situation. At this point, this is the review of the resolutions. If there's any questions from the mayor and council, please ask.
No, the only thing I was going to say was that not only is it good for the city from a monetary point of view, but this agreement was also contingent upon I-STAR adding scholarships, mentorships, apprenticeships, and another version of the Salt School, which they did for the Asbury Hotel. So I want to thank I-STAR for working with the city and meeting, you know, the requirements that we asked them to meet to start, you know, not only now hopefully hiring local residents, but a program to start training them. And that was something that we weren't going to move on this project without that in it. So thank you, I-STAR, for stepping up to the plate.
Brian is on his way here. He's running late with the train. Oh, and Fred's here, I forgot about him. Sorry. He's the attorney.
Anybody else have any questions on the resolutions?
No questions for me.
Matters by the city council?
Who wants to start?
I have nothing at this time.
You're on.
Just one thing. The next expansion seminar is going to be November 19 at 11 a.m., so anyone who's interested, please come to St. Stevens Church on Saturday, the 19th, at 11 a.m. Thank you.
AP-TV put in a new sound system, so those of you at home, because we get a lot of comments about the sound system, please shoot us an email and let us know if this fixed it. And hopefully for all of you, you know, you can hear us a little bit better now. And I want to thank Hera, who's the president of AP-TV, and the tire, and I think Ed Selvis was here. I don't know if he's still here. But anyway, the whole AP-TV crew for tirelessly working on getting an improved sound system for these meetings.
That's it? Okay, a couple brief announcements, as hopefully everybody is aware that the Asbury Park Music Foundation has applied to have another series of concerts in 2017 at the Springwood Avenue Park through the Levitt Amp Foundation, and you have to vote for this online. And voting closes on November 21st, so we're, please ask everybody here and everybody out there on TV land to vote for this. It's a great program. We thank the Asbury Park Music Foundation. The city's a co-sponsor of this in the past and will be in the future. It's at grant, G-R-A-N-T dot Levitt, L-E-V-I-T-T, amp, A-M-P dot org. So if you could go on that and vote once, it'll help us get that concert series back. Friday at 10 o'clock at the VFW is the Veterans Day Ceremony. We'd like to see everybody there. We have a great veterans group in Asbury Park, and it's always an enjoyable day, and they'll be honoring the policeman and fireman of the year. Last week, a new provider opened at 1201 Springwood Avenue, Ocean's Family Success Center. I stopped by, Yvonne stopped by. They had a soft opening last week. Lysia was there. I'm very impressed, and I think this is going to be outstanding for the community. And on the 16th, they're going to have another hard opening from 12 to 2 and 4 to 6. So that's at 1201 Springwood Avenue, Unit 105. So if you want to stop in and meet Linda Rossi, the director, and find out what they're all about, it's, we highly appreciative, and I think it'd be very, this is great for the community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There are a couple things. One is a follow-up. From two council meetings ago, we've begun working on the snow policy that's been requested. That should be out in the next two or three weeks, probably. The Wesley Lake Commission has requested that the city apply for a TAP grant. At this point in time, I'm not recommending the city apply one on behalf of the commission. We have our own initiatives and infrastructure that we must meet, so in my opinion, it should be a joint application between the commission, us, and Neptune, and as Neptune has already gone ahead and done their own thing, that we should be doing our own thing too, because there's just too many issues and it's a weaker application.
So Neptune is not doing a TAP grant for the bridge?
No, they are not.
But Michael, there'll be another opportunity coming down the line?
It usually comes around every two or three years. And during that time, we should, the three entities should sit down and hammer out what the next application should be. As I said last time, the bridge is a great project, but it really needs to have all three municipalities and the county, because it is a multiple jurisdiction application, so that it should be funded.
Okay.
And this is Carrie Turner's last meeting. She wasn't going to get away from that, and I'd like to thank her for the year that I've been here for being very helpful in working with Madison Asbury and all the work that she's done. You're not getting away from that. You're welcome.
Michael, can you put the snow removal thing on for the next meeting? Because I've been asking for that for like six weeks. Can he be done and presented at the next meeting? Because if we have a snowstorm, again, Asbury's problem is that it's always reactive to a snowstorm and never proactive, so we spend days before a snowstorm trying to get the word out on whatever we're doing with parking or where to put your car or, I'm just saying, if you can step it up DPW's priority list to the next meeting, I would be grateful.
Bill and Hannah have been asked to have it done for the 21st, the day before the meeting?
Okay.
Which is going to be, quite honestly, tight, because Bill is at the League of Municipalities next week.
Okay.
So whatever they have, I want, you know, obviously a dare so to review it before I give it to you guys. So that's the tentative goal, but with the league next week, it's going to be a little bit more difficult. But you'll have it.
Before the first snowstorm?
Will you think about having a year-end report for the public, for the residents of Asbury?
Yeah, that's not an issue.
Thank you.
Any other matters? Matters by the city attorney?
No matters at this time.
All right, at this time, can I have a motion to open a meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
The public, each poll member has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record when you come up to the mic.
Hi there, Randy Thompson, Park Avenue. I'm here representing Help Not Handcuffs, local nonprofit you're familiar with. I want to speak on the syringe access ordinance that you have proposed tonight. I've been very vocally anxious publicly about the need for this to be introduced sooner than later. I don't want that to take away from my comments being supportive of the fact that there is now an ordinance on the table, and because you put that there, we are in a better spot as a city, that we're at a place where we have never been before, even though this program was authorized long before several councils, before you were on board. This is a program that is called by the World Health Organization, a required element of HIV prevention. It's known to take syringes off the street. We don't have any safe disposal measures for people who engage in injection drug use, allaying fears people. This type of program does not promote drug use. It's known to actually make people healthier and discourage drug use, and it takes one out of five people, they end up getting healthier and going on to live their lives, sometimes without drugs. So this is a dynamite program. Completely supportive of the ordinance. I do have one recommendation for you. I think there should be a community advisory portion to that. This is a program, we now have, we now have an ARCAM program. This is our second harm reduction program. If it passes and if it is implemented, I think a program like this is very thinly funded by the state. It's going to need a lot of support, and this would not be some burdensome oversight committee, so to speak. It would just be a group of people who would be mandated in communication with the program to help support it, foster it, and make sure that this goes on to help prevent HIV. We've been heavily impacted by the HIV virus, and that was recognized by the Department of Health. We were one of the hardest-hit communities in the state, so cheers to you. We finally have an ordinance on the table. There's a health services provider here who's a little camera shy. I'm not going to note, mention them until they're ready to step out, but cheers to them as well, even though I'm not naming them, for stepping up to the plate, and thank you for that. I just hope you consider that one component of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to name them. So the VNA has been integral in working with the city and actually drafting, I think, this ordinance, or sent us a boilerplate draft, and we've enjoyed working with VNA and are happy to support them in this program.
Next.
Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue. I wanted to thank the council for the free parking privilege that's going to happen starting the day after Thanksgiving, or the Saturday after Thanksgiving and going to Christmas Day. But in order to advertise the free parking privilege, I picked up a copy of the ordinance, which says metered parking requirements in the downtown and the waterfront areas of the city are hereby suspended so to allow for free parking 12 to 6 each Saturday commencing on November 26 through and to, including December 24. It's not clear whether the municipal lots in the downtown, the municipal transportation and Bangs Avenue Garage are included in this ordinance, and it's also not clear which metered streets on the waterfront are included. I assume, but you can tell me, that the private lot on Lake and Grand is not included in the free parking plan. If we could clarify that, so when Jean Delo goes and asks the parking meter company to make those changes to the meters, were clear as to whether or not the parking lots are included? Last year, when this was passed, the parking lots weren't striped, so it really didn't affect them
Right.
last year. But now, are they part of this free parking on Saturday or not?
Yes.
They are.
Well, I wouldn't say, and Bangs Avenue Garage too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Whatever was asked here.
We didn't have some of these things last year.
Right, but yes, that was the intention. If it's not specifically in the ordinance, that would be directed. I believe the parking meter companies already been notified to put this in place, but Michael will follow up, because sometimes they've been notified to do things and they're a little bit slow and they forget, so.
Correct.
Can we follow?
Barbara's asked them twice.
What?
Barbara has asked them twice.
Can, okay.
Just confirm.
And do via email, so we have a paper trail, so when Nancy comes back and yells at us and says, "Well, we told them three times and we have the email," so we followed up on.
And we usually put something on the screen that says, like, "Enjoy your day and shopping and eating in Asbury Park," you know, today. What, I forget what we put on the screen before, but we put something on the screen that flashes up when they try to pay between those hours.
Could we put this on the electronic billboard as well?
Yes. So any advertisement you did last year, you can basically do the same exact advertisement and add the city lots.
And put it on the billboard.
No, but I mean, as far as the advertisement, she wants to put it.
Oh, yeah.
And also, if it can be programmed so that people could pay for parking after?
I think we did that last year, didn't we?
I'm not positive.
Not always.
Okay, so then don't call me on that.
Yes, that can be done. I'm being told.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
All right. On to minutes. Can I have approval for the minutes of March 24, 2016 workshop meeting, October 26, 2016 executive session, and October 26, 2016 regular session?
Move it.
Go move. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following resolutions are on the consent agenda. Resolution 2016-433, resolution authorizing approval of special events application. Resolution 2016-434, resolution authorizing the payment of payroll in an amount of $925,099.95. Resolution 2016-35, resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, authorizing a refund due to overpayment taxes due to large decrease of assessed value of property. Resolution 2016-436, resolution to credit sewer account for 1027 and 1/2 Madison Avenue. Resolution 2016-437, resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing for an insertion of special item of revenue in the 2016 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSC 48, colon, 4-87. This is for the Drive Sober grant. Resolution 2016-438, resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, oops, State of New Jersey, providing for an insertion of revenue, especially of revenue for 2016 budget for the City of Asbury Park. This is for the Body Armor Grant. Did I say that wrong? One's Drive Sober and the other, Chapter 159's the Body Armor Grant. And Resolution 2016-439, resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. Can I have a motion to approve these resolutions?
Move it.
Second.
New program, sorry, I'm a little slow doing it.
That's okay.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to individual resolutions. Resolutions 2016-440, resolution authorizing payment of bills in the amount of $1,868,285.45. Mayor Moore requested that purchase order 16-03376 be pulled from the bill list. He also wishes to abstain from line item 6-01232200009. Councilwoman Chapman?
Wait a second.
What's up?
Why do I want him staying?
Because that's your, that's the...
That was supposed to be pulled from the agenda totally.
That's not the one he gave me.
That's canceled. That $25?
No, that's pulled.
What am I abstaining from? I didn't ask to abstain from anything.
I'll show you.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. It's a late night.
Councilwoman Chapman requested abstain from purchase order 16-03-009. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Question. So we should adjust the number as only reduce it to $225, so it should be $1,868,060.45. The one for $25 was deducted, and the one for $200 was pulled.
Right. So the total we adjusted after?
Okay, thank you.
After the fact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-441, resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations for a fiscal year 2016 budget. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-442, resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, authorizing compensation payment to Michael Maltner upon his separation of employment. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-443, resolution for permission to apply for the FEMA AFG grant. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-444, resolution awarding a contract for environmental services for tax, Block Lot, Block 803 Lots 1 through 14 in the City of Asbury Park, also known as the Turf Club, to Lewis Consulting Group Incorporated. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-445, resolution of the mayor and city council, the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of subsequent developer agreement with AP Block 176 Venture Urban Renewal LLC. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolutions 2016-446, resolution authorizing issuance of non-recourse redevelopment area bonds of the City of Asbury Park in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,500,000, Block 4002 Infrastructure Project. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We'll move on to introductions of ordinances. Ordinance 2016-47, repealing Section 9-3 entitled Licensing for Cats Fees of Chapter 9 Animal Control of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing for this ordinance will be held on November 22, 2016. Second introduction ordinance is 2016-48, an ordinance admitting and supplementing Chapter 28. Health regulation.
He works for us. He works for us.
We'll distract it.
He works for us, it's okay.
Health regulations by adding Section 28 dash 4 Sterling Syringe Access Program are the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're moving on to public hearing, second reading. First is...
When's that here?
Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing is scheduled for November 22nd, 2016. Sorry about that.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Okay, that one I want, obviously you've done as quick as possible. The first one, like, doesn't it cost us more money to have a cycle reading this quick? I mean, so I don't care about the cats that are weeks to December.
No.
But, no what?
No, it doesn't, how would it cost us more money?
I thought you had to advertise. And we could advertise in the coaster, but now we have to advertise in the press, which is like 10 times the amount of money to do it within two weeks. No? If I'm wrong, I've heard that before.
Not 10 times, but I mean, it, it's, it is faster, so we can, we can do it for the first meeting in December.
Yeah, just because we don't care, we're, we're doing it to save money, so why waste the money on advertising in the press when we can advertise in the coaster and do it the first meeting in December?
All right, so ordinance...
For the cats.
Yeah, for the cats, the syringe, I want to do as quick as possible.
Ordinance 2016-47, which is repealing the cat licenses, will move to the regular meeting of December 14th, 2016.
Thank you, thank you.
No, they don't.
Okay, I think we're on to the second reading public hearing. 2016-45, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with AP Block 176 Venture Urban Renewal LLC and granting a tax exemption.
Mayor and council, we have a procedural issue that has to be fixed. You need to first do an amendment to the financial agreement to allow for the final financial numbers scheduled to be included. These numbers are a little less, it's a de minimis change in the annual amount, which is one-half of 1 percent. So, you have to do an amendment first before you open for public hearing and then pass the ordinance.
I move to amend.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
All right, now, can I have a motion to open to public hearing, please?
Move it.
Second.
Anybody like to be heard?
What is that about? What is that tax?
Rita, you got to get up to the microphone, Rita. Okay.
Rita Moran, 08th Avenue. What is that tax exemption?
Give a brief presentation, please. It is the pilot agreement for the 1101 Ocean Avenue property, which will bring the city over $2 million in revenue. The only way the project would get completed is if they had the payment in lieu of taxes instead of paying the ad valorem taxes. This will, when we were at the local finance board this morning, the director of local government services said this is a transformative project in the City of Asbury Park. This is the project to complete 1101, Old Esperanza, Old C8, and this allows them to have it built, because otherwise financially it wouldn't make sense.
Well, how long is it for?
It is a 30-year pilot with a three-year construction build-out.
Wow, 30 years?
Yes.
They get a tax exemption for 30 years?
Not a tax exemption, a payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
Yes. And I may be wrong on some numbers. Right now, the entire city, your house, my house, this building, that building, blah, 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 everything in the city is generating in tax dollars several million, I want to say, seventeen million dollars. So...